Good afternoon, everybody. Welcome to our town hall meeting in the great room. It's wonderful to see everyone finding it. It's just been so wonderful to have new spaces to go to. And I keep thinking how much more we are going to appreciate the fellowship hall when we get back to it. A little bit of deprivation really makes you appreciate what you have. I wanted to, for our opening time this morning, I'm taking something out of a Lenten study, which of course is from the Christian faith, but the prayer that I found in here really is appropriate for any faith. I feel like so many of us throughout our lifetime were told to kind of learn to be better givers. But now, at this part of our journey, perhaps we need to learn something new. Let us pray. God, I have spent a lifetime learning to be a giver. Now, I need to learn the lesson of becoming a gracious receiver. Open my heart not only to your gifts, but to the gifts and good intentions of those who care for me. Amen.
Good afternoon and happy March. I hope it's a happy March. Let's start off with good news. Does anybody have any good news that they'd like to share? How about any March birthdays? No March birthdays. Well, I will share with you that a week from today, my son, that many of you know, will be turning 21 years old. And my good news was that he said that he would rather have dinner with me for his 21st birthday than with his friends who want him to take him out for his first beer. Ha ha ha. How about anniversaries? Any anniversaries in March? Yes? How many will the McClinticks be celebrating?
Oh my.
A lot.
Fifty-nine.
Fifty-nine. That's wonderful. Yes.
Still much older born in March.
March is a good month to have children. Any other March celebrations? Robbie?
March 27.
Anniversary or birthday?
Anniversary.
Wonderful. Fifty-two years. Amazing. So I won't ask for advice on what has gotten you to 52 and 59 years old. But if I would have asked my husband, "We're going to be celebrating our 33rd," he would say selective hearing is what God was hearing.
What I'm saying is, if she says something right, you just praise her.
Right. Yes, honey.
If she says something right, just shut up.
So praise her if she says something right. If you don't agree, just shut up. I'm going to give my husband that word of advice as well. Maybe we'll make it to that many, too.
I wouldn't argue with selective hearing.
Don't argue with selective hearing. Okay, I won't do that. So March has always been a magical time of the year for me because I grew up in New York, as many of you know, and if you make it to March, then you know that spring isn't that far ahead and that we could make it. This weekend, I spent some time in my yard. It was almost 70 degrees out. And that selective hearing, I laid my hammock. And when my husband called me, I pretended I was sleeping for a good hour and a half and just listened to the birds and looked at all of the blooms that were coming out on the trees. I cannot wait to see how gorgeous this campus looks this spring. You know, in my absence the last three and a half years, I haven't gotten to enjoy all of the new plantings and the beauty of Cedarfield. And I'm really excited to see that. Also, I know how hard many of you work on your gardens at your cottages, but also the wonderful volunteers who help out with the different areas on campus and the gardening angels. I'm just really excited to see what March has to bring. So thank you for that good work. And if you happen to go on a walk and you see something that is just breathtaking, stop by my office and let me know about it because I'd like to see it, too. Okay, let's start off with our agenda today. Emily will come up and give us a marketing update.
Good afternoon, everyone. I am so excited to present to you all with some good news from our department. So first of all, I'll share, we had two move-ins last month. Both of them were cottage residents. So we're welcoming Linda Duesenberry to Cottage 2127 and Warren and Fran Way to 2162. So please, if you see new faces, as per usual, if you see new faces, please, please always say hello to them and help them navigate the building. We have a marketing event that is going to be taking place in April that I wanted to share with you all. It's going to be a panel discussion with lunch for folks on our waitlist to hear from select residents about life at Cedarfield and not only life at Cedarfield, but the moving process as well to give any kinds of advice, you know, or information that might be helpful to them. So that's coming up in April. Now for the very great, great news. So in this month, we have three move-ins that are scheduled. Next month, April, we have four move-ins scheduled. And in May, we have, if everything goes to plan, we have 14 move-ins coming in May. And we're waiting. Thanks, Bob. And we're waiting to hear back next week on three more. So we are on fire down there. Someone bring us an extinguisher. So that is, those are my updates. We are thrilled with the progress that we've made. I think we're going to end this year really, really strong. So I'm very proud of the work of my team, very proud of the maintenance and the housekeeping teams who are making all of that possible. We bring them in and then the next step is really on the rest of the team. So it's, it's just, it's exciting. Does anyone have any questions for me? Alrighty, thank you very much.
With all those move-ins in May, it might be difficult to find an elevator.
I should have said too, Amy, that the one sale we made today was a one-bedroom.
So of those of you who haven't heard that in the back of the room, the sale today was a one-bedroom. Yay! We've been talking the last several months about the difficulty in selling one-bedrooms, but you know what? We haven't had much difficulty selling one-bedrooms over the last few weeks. It now seems to be something that people are really interested in. So we're excited about that. Thank you to Emily and her team for all the hard work. And as she said, it's really been a group effort between maintenance and housekeeping as well, making sure we stay on track and move people in on a timely basis. So thank you. Next up is Brittany.
Hi, everybody. Can you hear me okay? Okay, how about now? Yes? Wonderful. So for those who don't know, my name is Brittany Ingram Atkins. I'm the healthcare administrator here at Cedarfield. Mr. Robbie, I'm going to take your advice. I'm celebrating my second wedding anniversary on the 24th. So noted for that. I do have my clan that's with, here with me, Lauren and Leah, who will speak in a second. But I do want to let you guys know of one of our events that we have on the calendar for this month in March. So is everybody familiar with Pi Day? Does everybody know what Pi Day is? No? Okay, so Pi Day, a little bit of history. Pi Day is on March 14th. So the formula for pi, or when you hit pi on your calculator, it's 3.14159 and a whole bunch of numbers after that, right? So we are celebrating Pi Day here in Health Services with a open-house style pie sampling. So any pie that you can think of, we are going to have right here in the great room for our Health Services residents to come and try as many pie options as they can possibly handle. So that's one fun thing that we have going on through the month.
Good afternoon, everyone. I am here to share how the Innovation Fund has actually benefited us in Health Services. So about a year ago, our department applied to this Innovation Fund to purchase an aging simulation suit, otherwise known as a G E R T suit. So it comes with equipment like gloves, goggles. You know, it's got things you can put in your ears, believe it or not, that when you wear them, it simulates medical conditions like arthritis, hearing deficits, vision loss, things along those lines that older adults might experience. So since this purchase, Health Services has used it to train new team members coming in. It acts as a sensitivity training tool for those team members who might be working alongside residents who have those sorts of conditions. So it certainly has been a great benefit to us and it is thanks to you as the residents. So we just wanted to take an opportunity to share how it's being used. Any questions about that? Yes, ma'am?
Is there any thought of having residents be able to use some of this sometimes so we understand what some of our compatriots are, or what's ahead for us?
Yeah. That's a great idea and certainly there's always room for expansion of how to use this. So I know I personally have put all of the gear on and it certainly is an experience. I'll put it that way. So that's, that's a great idea. Thank you. Anything else? Okay, appreciated.
Hi, everyone. Hi, everyone. My name is Leah. I'm the Director of Nursing. And Ms. Williams, you are going to be the volunteer. You know, us nurses will volunteer somebody anything, right? Well, again, the three of us wanted to come up to let you see that we're the leadership of the Health Services Department. So that's Morning Glory, Assisted Living, and then Poppy Place and Lavender Magnolia. So that encompasses Health Services. So if you need something, find any one of us, you know, one team, okay? And there's the other piece of equipment that was funded by the grant, the iStat. That's coming soon. So we've been playing with that. And Caitlin, who's not here today, has been our phlebotomy victim. She's let us draw her blood a few times so that we can get that machine going. So that's to come. I wanted to share with you the COVID statistics that we have in the community. As you can see, we are mask-free right now, so that's a great thing. We have one team member who's out with COVID and we have one resident in Independent Living who has COVID. But they aren't impacting us at this time, so that's why we are mask-free, meaning no source control. So keep up the good work with hand washing and distancing and all that good stuff. So appreciate that. I wanted to also let you know that we have reestablished the satisfaction surveys for admissions and discharges to Health Services, specifically Healthcare. So that if you come over and you're having a short stay with us, we want to know how we're doing. So we're, you know, we're listening to your feedback. For those of you who have had a stay and shared some of the good and some of the not-so-great, we're taking each opportunity to learn and grow and be better. So we're doing that more consistently. And I already touched on the infection control tips. Everyone's doing a great job with that, covering your mouth, washing your hands, and you know, those kinds of things. So if there's anything that I can help you with, please, you can find me in the Healthcare Administration suite, which is in through the double doors around this way. Is there any questions with, why, yes, Ms. Denise?
What are the COVID? Are we following the new CDC guidelines for COVID?
Not exactly. CMS is special. They treat us differently. So because we're regulated, we're going with what CMS is requiring, which is still a little more stringent with the isolation and keeping distance and things like that.
Thank you.
Yes? Did you have a question?
Yeah, I was just, what are your new mask rules? Because the CDC changed the mask rules.
Why do we do mask rules?
No, I said the CDC changed.
What are the new mask rules? Well, I'm just going to tell you the truth. I'm not sure because the rules for us here didn't change, which means they didn't change for me. I'm still masking when we're supposed to and if we're in outbreak just because of the population that we're in. Okay? Any other questions? Thank you, great time.
So just to clarify a little bit further, yes, the CDC guidelines have changed, but CMS is what we abide by their rules because they certify us for Medicare beds. So of course, they're a little bit more stringent on their rules, but we are enthusiastic that over the next few months that the rules will be a little bit more lenient than they are now. I know that David and I were looking at budget numbers this morning because next week is the week we review our budget with the corporate office. And last year, we spent about $150,000 in COVID testing supplies. That's a lot of money. We are so enthusiastic that we cut that significantly. So we need everybody to stay healthy so we don't have to use those tests and our budget needs to come in on budget.
And we're using surgicals more than N95.
Yeah, that's a good point. So Leah just shared with the group that we are using our surgical masks, which are a little bit more comfortable and easier to breathe with than our N95 or KN95. Any other questions about masks? So, yeah.
What about Independent Living?
Independent Living rules for masks? We don't have any rules for masks in Independent Living. If you test positive, either Ann Hopper or Jean Macklin from our nursing staff will come and see you and provide you with the information you need to know about isolating. Okay? So it's funny, going back to the Pi Day. Have you folks, this is probably for some of you, the first time you've heard about Pi Day. Right? Some of you in the back are saying, "Yes, we heard about it." So Pi Day is March 14th. It was the day that Albert Einstein was born. And when you're in elementary and middle and high school now, you learn a lot about pi and what that number represents. So 3.14, or March 13th is Pi Day. And yes, that was the day my son was born. So we only eat pie on birthdays in March. We don't eat cake. So here's a question for the group. How many prefer pie over cake? Raise your hands. Wow, that's more than I thought. Okay. Next on the agenda is Steve Nelson. Many of you know Steve by now. He is the Maintenance and Engineering Director that we have been working with for the last probably six or seven weeks. He comes to us from Windsor Mead, our sister community. He's with us typically three days a week. The reason why he is not with us right now is because he is meeting with a maintenance director candidate. So we're excited about that and I'm going to be meeting with Steve after this to hear his impressions of the candidate. But we are actively looking for a replacement for that position and more to come on that. The other things that Steve has been working on, and he has been spending the night here. So he's not just working from 8:00 to 4:30. I get text messages at 10:00 and 11:00 o'clock sometimes or pictures that he's taken around the building. So he's been busy. Is, one of the things that he's focusing on right now is our signage project. So our signage project has two components. One is the outside signage, which we call wayfinding. And the other is the inside component, which is more directional signs and labeling of offices and doors. That's a big project. We have lots of doors and hallways and rooms in this building. And this is a pretty big campus as well. And when we replace signs, we want them to all look uniform. So he has been putting together templates for us to move forward with. Tom Maxwell has been offering some assistance with the internal signs as well as the external signs. But as you all know, we work with committees to help provide guidance and support. So the next phase would be for the signs to be looked at with Steve. And we'll call upon the Environmental Services Committee to help with that as well as the Communications Committee. So some of you who serve on those committees, be prepared that we're going to include you in those discussions just to ensure that we cover all of our bases and do the project the right way the first time. Steve shared with us, and it's sometimes great to learn from other people's mistakes. Our sister community, Windsor Mead, just redid all of their external signs. And if you go to the campus, they're beautiful. But guess what? When it's dark outside, you can't read the signs because they didn't use the paint that reflects at night. So we have put that top on our list to make sure that when we move forward with that, that we do that. So it's been great working with Steve and having him help guide us with this project. And he's working on a lot of others as well. Any questions about the signs? Okay. The next thing on the list is Lobby and Fellowship Hall renovations update. So I'll ask this question. I'm afraid I might not want the, for you to raise your hand and admit to this, but I'm curious, did anybody see the inside of the fellowship hall yet?
Yes.
It looks wonderful! Not only is it bright, it is getting to be beautiful. I'm excited to be able to share that with you. And it looks like the progress is, is going better than anticipated in that room. I'm having my fingers crossed that we'll get that about a week earlier than what we had originally planned. But the fellowship hall itself is coming, is better than what I expected. It's so nice to see something in real life and not on paper. And I hope that you have that same feeling when you see it not too long from now. For those of you who have been inconvenienced by the work that's happening on the main administrative hallway, I am very sorry. It's been an inconvenience for all of us. Have you seen the stilt walkers who are taking down? It's amazing that they can paint and walk on stilts at the same time. I remember my mother telling me that I couldn't walk straight and chew gum. They're on stilts and painting. That's pretty amazing. My guess is that by the end of this week, they'll be done with that hallway and be able to turn and work on the two bathrooms that are by the Administrative Conference Room. But that, that project is really progressing and I think it's looking better already. D-Wing Generator work continues. The brick wall has been built around the generator. And our electric car charging station goes hand-in-hand with that generator project. We were waiting for one piece of equipment to install for the charging station. It came on Monday of this week, so we feel like that project will be wrapped up pretty soon. Any questions for me about any of those projects or any other maintenance projects going on? Yes, ma'am?
I think we'll have to put a roof over the generators.
I believe the generator does not get a roof. I think it needs air, from what I understand. Yeah. Any other questions? Yes?
How many charging stations will there be?
There will be two charging stations.
Will that accommodate four vehicles in the same room?
I believe it's two, two charging stations accommodate two charging cars at a time. How many have electric cars? The last count we had was seven on campus. And many of those have chargers in their garages. Any other questions about maintenance or charging stations or generators? All right. Next up is Florence. Thank you.
Good afternoon. I'm Florence Brooks, Director of Resident Life and Wellness. It's so good to be with you all this afternoon. I want to invite you to revisit with me a few highlights from the last 36 hours at Cedarfield. Early yesterday, yesterday morning at 4:30, Jack Johnson from the Maintenance Department opened Cedarfield's doors to welcome the Board of Elections and volunteers to set up in the newly renovated gathering place for yesterday's presidential primary. A few hours later, about 8:00 o'clock, a representative from the Board of Elections came by to visit the site and evaluate the setting. The team working received an A-plus rating for this location, the setup and organization. The resident in charge said, "I love working here. We always get A-pluses." About 8:00 o'clock, a small group of residents gathered for breakfast then ventured out for a dawn chorus walk around campus to hear the sweet sounds of our songbird neighbors. Then at 10:30, a group of nine Independent Living residents partnered with nine memory care residents for organizing Minds Through Art, known as ALMA. An art experience designed especially for those experiencing cognitive decline. This is the first of several art experiences in this series. From 4:00 to 5:00 yesterday afternoon, seven boys arrived from St. Christopher's for a volunteer orientation and to assist us in stuffing eggs for our Easter parade, which will be on April 1st. These young men will continue to visit our campus two times a month for the rest of this semester. And they'll be volunteering in Health Services and assisting with other projects. Last night, a group of 70 residents and family members gathered in the clubhouse for trivia night. The 70 divided into 11 teams and competed for prizes by answering questions such as, are you ready? Think with me. According to a 1963 commercial, what toy uses two ordinary bulbs and a special cooling chamber to make cakes, cookies, brownies, pizza, pies, and biscuits?
Bake ovens.
Easy bake oven, that's right! No, 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 you advance to the next round. A passerby commented that it was really special hearing the sounds of voices and laughter coming from those gathered in the dark of night. Finally, this morning, a 26-passenger bus left at 9:30 carrying a group of residents for a guided tour at the American Civil War Museum. And then at noon, 26 residents gathered again in the clubhouse for our Lenten lunch and lecture experience. At Cedarfield, our cups runneth over. There is so much to enjoy and celebrate every day. What a delight it is for me personally to drive on campus each day and take in all the beauty. The Lenten roses are blooming, the camellia bushes, bushes are flourishing, the daffodils are dancing. I hope you are experiencing the joys of living here. If you're not, if you've not hit your stride, then let my team or myself know and we will be delighted to assist you in exploring some opportunities that you may not have had the courage to try. A few items to share. The June election will return to the fellowship hall. We welcomed to our driving team this month, driver Wesley Savoy. And Cedarfield driver Vonda Hunt just celebrated her first-year anniversary with us. Fitness instructor Brianna Ampe recently completed her course of study with the American Council of Exercise and is now a certified personal trainer. Reach out to Brianna directly if you would like to book a personal training session. I understand that Tuesdays and Thursdays are the dates she has available. Be sure to record volunteer hours, including committees you attend and participate in. You can find the forms for this in the resident mailroom. We are hoping to post next week the social work position. In the meantime, we're grateful for Heidel Duncan, who continues to assist us as an interim. My office is located in the business office if I can assist you in any way. And on one last note, when I leave here, after driving into this beautiful setting, I get to go home and drive down my beautiful street. And this week, all the daffodils are dancing, just up and down the street. So because I'm not selfish, I brought two to share with you. William Wordsworth said, "Then my heart with pleasure fills and dances with the daffodils." And he also said, "If one daffodil is worth a thousand pleasures, then one is too few." That's why I have two. Thank you.
Thank you, Florence. Unfortunately, my house is in the shade. Next is Charles Wickham.
Well, good afternoon. I am Charles Wickham. I'm the Director of Donor Development for Pinnacle Living. And I am here at Cedarfield on Wednesdays helping out with the philanthropy department. February has been a very busy month, thanks to all of you. As you know, we've had our Angel Fund campaign. And I'm very excited to say that yesterday morning, Sissy and I balanced our books and we're all reconciled. And the grand total figure that we have, that you raised, So I would ask that you please congratulate yourselves on a job well done. And also knowing that these funds will be helping individuals in crisis, what a gift. I have the opportunity of speaking at the orientation. And that's one of the things I tell the new team members, that our residents try to invest in them. And they do that through the Angel Fund, in case there is an emergency, and also through the Scholarship Fund. In May, you will be hearing more about our Samaritan program. We will be having a campaign between Mother's Day and Father's Day. And we have several activities that you will be interested to participate in. So thank you so much.
So I'm looking around. Just before we move on to the next part, which is administrative reports, any directors that haven't been up front yet? I know David. Anybody else in the back or the sides? I think it's really important that everybody knows who the directors are, in case you have a question. And more importantly than that, that you don't wait for a meeting like this or our area meetings to come to us with questions or concerns or comments. So David, just stand up for one second. David Taylor is our Director of our Business Office. Many of you know him. If you don't know him, his office is next to Florence's. It's across the hall from mine.
Behind Mariah.
Behind Mariah. Everyone knows where Mariah is. Is Mariah here? She was. Okay. Next on the list is something that I've had lots of questions about for the last two or three months, and that's our beauty shop. And when I say beauty shop, I talk about our barber shop as well. So many of you know that we have contracted with a company by the name of RSS Salons. And RSS Salons has met with Florence. And we have shared with them that we are going to move in another direction because we feel like our residents' needs are something that aren't being quite met the way they need to be met right now. So within the next few days, I hesitate to move forward and share specific information, but there will be a change in our beauty shop operations, which will also include a barber addition as well. So please look at your mailboxes probably early next week, late this week, for announcement of new services offered through our barber and beauty shop. Not necessarily immediately, but probably within the next four to six weeks. But just wanted residents to know that we heard your concerns. And we know how important it is for you to get your hair done. And we have made some changes that we think you'll be happy with. Next on my list is We Care Connect. I think I remind everybody of this every single month, but I'm going to remind you one more time, that We Care Connect is a company that we contract with that does satisfaction surveys for both our residents and our team members. So you may receive a call, an email, or a text message from We Care Connect. It typically comes within the first 30 days you move in. And if you've lived here more than a year, you will get it in your anniversary month. If you see that pop up on your phone, you can answer it. It's not a scam call. We're basically contracting with this group to find out how satisfied you are with living at Cedarfield. The questions are simple. Things like, "How would you rate your experience in the dining room? Would you recommend us to a friend or a relative?" It's important that we know what you think so that we are able to make adjustments and make sure that satisfaction for not only you, but those coming in, is something that we're on target with. So again, if We Care Connect reaches out to you, please make sure that you don't ignore it if you'd like to share some information. I think it's very important to note that the comments that you make are not confidential. And the reason for that is that if you have a specific concern, we want to make sure that we're able to call you back and address that. Any questions about We Care Connect?
Thank you. When we get a call, does it say We Care Connect? I don't answer anonymously.
I think it does. I know that when they call me, it says We Care Connect, Ms. Williams.
Will you repeat the question?
Yep. The question was, "When you get a call from We Care Connect, will it say We Care Connect?" And it was affirmed from some of our team members who get that call that it does say We Care Connect on that message on your voicemail display. Any other questions about We Care Connect or surveys? Our numbers are looking really good. I shared with someone earlier this week that we have, in the last three months, have come up in satisfaction in both team member satisfaction and resident satisfaction. So that makes me very happy. Capital project review. So most of you know that June starts our new budget. And what we typically do in the last three or four months of the year is review any capital items that are still on our list that we haven't addressed yet. So we are busy bees, looking at all of the different things that we have said we wanted to do in this year that we still haven't done. So you'll be seeing other projects happening over the next couple of months. One of the projects that we're working on right now is wallpaper removal around the elevators. And eventually, we're going to remove all of the wallpaper on all of the floors. It's been here since 1996, since we opened. And I think it's time for it to go and we get a little bit of a facelift. We'll also focus on some of the lights in the hallways as well, just to make sure that that appears brighter for everybody. We're looking at some projects that involve the clubhouse, signage, and some other specific areas, including health services and assisted living. So more to come on that. And as you know, when we share our budget numbers at the end of the year, do a review, we'll share all of the things that we've attributed to capital expenditures. Questions about budget? Maintenance Director update. I shared, we have a maintenance perspective in the building now. We've worked with resident committees. Thank you all who served in that interview team, as well as some of our leadership team members have met with the candidate. Our goal is to find someone within the next four to six weeks. But I will share with you, we will not move forward until we have the right person. I think it's really important to find someone who not only understands the business, but understands our culture and the needs of our community. So we'll be excited to be able to introduce that person once we find them. But know that that search hasn't stopped. It will continue to look for the candidate for that position. And finally, I'd like to introduce Beth Travis. Beth, come on up. Has everybody met Beth? Well, you're going to get to meet her now. And we're going to plan a meet and greet with Beth within the next few weeks. Beth is our new Therapy Director down in Functional Pathways. Beth, I shared with some of you, isn't new to Cedarfield because her mom was our Director of Nursing for a short period of time. So Beth is familiar with where we were when we opened and where we are now, has many, many years of experience. Is everything okay?
Oh, yes.
Oh, okay. Come on camera, Beth. There she is. Beth is local to Richmond. She and her husband Sean have three almost grown boys. And Beth has been in the field for a long time. She's worked at Westminster Canterbury for 12 years?
11.
11 years. And her most recent position was at the Circle Daycare Center, right?
Circle.
Yep, Circle Center. So please say after the meeting and introduce yourself if you haven't met Beth yet. She's a speech and language pathologist and has already made positive changes down there. And the team has embraced her with open arms. So join me in welcoming Beth. Okay. Stick around for a few minutes if you don't mind. Okay. Florence. Oh, question?
I noted that the Dining Director is not on here. Where do we stand with that?
So the question is, where do we stand with the Dining Director? So we have twisted Neil's arm, as everybody knows, for the last several months. And although he is really enjoying his position here, he has made it known that his wife will not let him move to Richmond. So we are working with a headhunter right now to recruit team members that we think would fit into, again, the culture that we have here at Cedarfield, and also understand where we want to go with this dining program. So just like with the Maintenance Director, once we identify good candidates, we'll bring the Dining Services Committee into those interviews, as well as some of our leadership team. I did have an interview a few weeks ago, but I shared that with that person that before we brought him in for a second interview, I wanted to have other candidates as well. So we continue to work with that. Thanks for asking. Florence.
Thank you, Amy. Amy asked if I would give you an update on one of our core documents, which is called Cedarfield's Cultural Competency and Diversity Plan. So as you all know, we go through every four years a CARF accreditation process. And when they arrive, they review... They visit the facilities, and they look at policies, and they review a couple of key documents. One of those documents that they look at is our Cultural Competency and Diversity Plan. And this plan is a plan that looks at age, gender, sexual orientation, race, ethnicity, spiritual beliefs, socioeconomic status, disability, and language among team members and residents, and looks at what we're doing to address needs that have been identified in those areas to support people in positive ways. The plan is action-oriented. It's future-oriented. And it asks these sorts of questions. What is the area to be addressed? Who are the persons served, residents, team members, or beyond? What is the need? What is the solution? What is the budget impact? What is the due date? Who is responsible? And what are the indicators showing progress? So our plan is rather extensive. We have a committee that meets one to two times a year that reviews the goals and updates them. And I want to share with you updates on three of those goals. One of the goals for 2023 was to ensure that sexual orientation does not become a barrier to working or living at Cedarfield. In 2023, Pinnacle Living contracted with Sage Care with the desire to achieve Level 1 certification. This Level 1 certification was achieved with training being held for leadership and team members throughout our organization. If you visit the Pinnacle Living or Cedarfield website and scroll all the way down to the homepage, you'll see some icons across the bottom that show our different designations. And the icon on the furthest right is one that says Sage Care. Sage is a national advocacy and services organization that has been a champion for LGBTQ+ older adults since 1978. Sage Care is a cultural competency training program specifically designed for long-term care and other living providers such as this that helps create more welcoming environments. So our team members and leadership went through training, and we were able to hit the threshold of what we needed to achieve a designation in this regard. Secondly, another identified need was that team members need support to navigate a variety of concerns, including legal, social, financial, and so forth. The identified solution was to increase participation in our EAP, which is an Employee Assistance Plan. Pinnacle Living has contracted with the new EAP provider and provided promotion, education, and review of services for all team members this past fall. The resources available to team members include information on the website, phone calls, and ongoing consultations. Thirdly, a new goal established this year was to organize a team member diversity, equity, and inclusion team to organize DEI events and education for Cedarfield team members to partner with the existing DEI resident-led committee. This newly formed group has met once and planned several events, including a focus on autism in April and a prayer event in May. These are just three needs. The needs cover a variety of things involving both residents and team members. And it's just a sampling. But all this information is captured in one document and again, used for our review every four years. If you would like to see the document in its entirety, I am happy to share it with you. I'll try to enlarge the font. Thank you so much. Any questions about this? Thank you for listening.
Thank you, Florence. I am going to share our mission moment with everybody. For those of you who come to these meetings on a regular basis, you know that we highlight one team member who, over the month, has done something that enriches life's journey. And this month, we are going to acknowledge someone from the Maintenance Team. And I don't see him in the room. Is there anybody out there from Maintenance? Well, I'm going to share the information with you so that when you see him, you could congratulate him. And he'll be shocked because he wasn't here to learn that he is earning this honor. Okay. So one thing I've always prided myself on is the partnerships we have here at Cedarfield with outside organizations. What makes me most proud is ultimately that we work together to better the world around us, our local community, or joint efforts which benefit our team members and residents. When a local high school student reached out to me a few months ago and asked about doing his Boy Scout project here, I automatically said yes. To be completely transparent, I was a Girl Scout. My daughter was a Girl Scout, but my son was a Boy Scout dropout. But he did love scouting. I know nothing about Pinewood Derbies, selling popcorn, or starting campfires. But fortunately, we had a team member here in our Maintenance Department by the name of Sean Lee, who did. When I reached out to Sean and the Maintenance Team about helping this young man achieve his goal of becoming an Eagle Scout, he was excited and enthusiastic and volunteered without me even saying a word. "The project will enhance the beauty and the functionality of our pond and will provide a place for turtles to rest." Who doesn't love a turtle? Interestingly, the young man is also the grandson of our now Resident Council President Frank Miller. Eric will be here working with Sean to ensure that his project is completed on time. And I hope that his memories of working with Sean will be memorable for him. This month's Mission Moment Award will go to Sean Lee for his willingness to represent Cedarfield in the partnership with the local Boy Scouts and for being a mentor to Eric throughout his project. Thank you, Sean. Speaking of presidents of the Resident Council, Mr. Miller will now join us with a short report.
Thank you, Amy. And thank you also, Sean. Eric is excited. I was with him last night. Let's see. Five days, 13 hours, and 50 minutes. That's how long I've been president of the... So you can probably find more things that I don't know than what I do know today. But I would like to tell you a couple of things. One, that next two weeks, we will be meeting with an orientation meeting for both the committee chairs and with the area reps. And the primary emphasis of those meetings will be to see if we can improve our communications with you, but maybe more importantly, your communications with us so that we can better take care of those issues that you bring to the council and to the committees. In doing that, I hope that at least by next meeting, I'll introduce you to those committee chairs, particularly the new ones, and who the area reps are. So we look forward to that. Hopefully, you'll take it easy on me today, until we can get a little more on the ground. But if you do have a question, I'll do my best with it. Thank you. Thank you. Sean's here.
Sean, come on down, you're the next contestant on The Price is Right. He asked, what did he do? So you're about 1 minute and 45 seconds late to learning that you have won our mission award for the month of March for helping with the Boy Scout project and Eric.
We didn't finish yet.
It's okay, we know that it's, it's, he said, "We didn't finish yet." We know that it's in the planning stage and everyone's excited about it and just the fact that you're willing to work with him and mentor him means a lot to him and it means a lot to us as well.
I appreciate that, I'm looking forward to it.
And you are too. Last announcement before I tell everyone that they can go is that our meet and greet with Beth is on the 11th, which is next Monday, at 10:30, right outside the Tar B Gym. Any other questions? We didn't see Sean either. Sean, could you come and make sure you're on the camera? So I'm getting remote messages from outside. We have a group watching remotely, Sean, so come stand right in front of the microphone and wave so everyone knows that.
I made an appearance.
Have a wonderful day, thank you for being here. One more question, Bill Smith?
Amy, I have discussed this before, I think, but the light going out to Three Top, the one on the left side. When residents are coming from Gaskins Road and have to cross over at night, it is very hard to see that you're on the right side. That light really needs to be fixed.
So we've spoke about not only light, but putting paint, the glow-in-the-dark 3M paint on the curb so that you know where to turn and that's in process. Thank you for bringing that.
The light would help tremendously there. I don't know whether it just needs a bulb or what.
Okay, so the question for those of you at home who don't see the group is that the light coming into Cedarfield from Gaskins Road is making it difficult to see where their turn is coming in. Thank you for bringing that up again. Have a wonderful afternoon, enjoy the rest of the day and thank you for joining us. Thanks Eddie.